Works for the paper. Last couple of times I said plus releases out. Usually they got bounced back.
Yeah.
You should have the resolutions sent these. Emailed down to you like Thursday. Um, like a certain line down to you for the, um, you know, stuff. A bunch of allocation.
Even if I have a copy, even if it's not green. It's only this one stuff that like is called face.
Yup.
It comes in a little jar. That's my try. I just really got tired because I can't. I can't just put all this stuff on my face. It makes it redder.
And I have a virgin face.
That works better doesn't stain it.
Um, it does stays but for like five seconds and then it's.
It makes my face really thick. Even though it's not summer, it just makes my face red. It's the type of breath. The older you're getting up as you should.
Yeah.
Italian. Information on those properties. Wait for John. Want to get back to you. You know. Conservative round. I never thought you'd say that. Tell you who cares.
Just the agenda, the package, too much packets. I got your notes today too, okay? I got your notes today. Two minutes.
What is, what was the name of that movie with him? Yeah, exactly. She looks like the little tramp. Charlie Chaplin, just get the Charlie Chaplin going on. Oh, Mary.
I'm waiting for John.
Oh, bye. Oh, look at.
Oh, but where it's gonna go? I got questions in terms of, you know, how much is the dollars per property? So $230,000 for two properties? Are they giving the house away for free at the end or what? And there's gotta be some revenue tied to this when they sell it. Right? You buy it for, comes out now. You put 120,000 into it, you sell it by the time. When the money comes back, do we get the money? That's right. Without loans, well then that's just, they can buy it, fix it, and give it away. Which we're paying for, actually buying the whole house. At that point at 150, whatever it is. Pay the whole thing and give it away?
Well, I practically have to because I'm sure it's an ugly neighborhood. Oh, yeah, they apologize. He's crazy. He reminds me of, um, you know, the guy there in Florida. Zimmerman, Mr. Zimmerman. Should wait till I'm doing projects. Twenty years. We have a billion.
One million. Actually, a million dollars is not that much. One billion. But it's an old movie, it's still great.
I love that.
Still a great one, it's a classic, right?
Okay. Like what he goes, starts saying to me, he goes, he gives big bangs. Don't say that. So you feel like doing here some night?
Don't.
No. She's on the edge, she's gonna have.
I'm surprised I haven't forgotten about that.
I got a glass of water, unless you put a good one, right?
We should all bring spray balm, the meeting.
Really? Wait, no. Don't worry, I'm fine tonight.
Can you guys have hats?
Me too.
Definitely.
Not saying anything. Ready to go? I do, I really like that.
All right, I'd like to call the recessed city council meeting to order. Um, we have two items on the agenda from last week's meeting. One is the CDBG project, the loan application for demolition and the, and the demolition of the old social services building. The other item is to deal with the properties that we approved in committee last week. So first item then is I'd like to have some more conversation about the, um, the loan application for CDBG monies that would be used for property demolition as well as demolition of the old social services building. Do people still have questions? Because we've got representative from Gillesse is here. Mr. Berg is here.
I've got a question. Unfortunately, when things went down from my office to Berg's office last week, they got, some of them got mixed in between legislative requests and new resolutions. And under the claims eight, nine, or 10 are the three properties that you approved and the resolutions I've outlined. But on the consolidated plan, I reworded it to a fashion that will be satisfied all the concerns that I heard last week. Did you get, um, I sent it down with Chuck, I believe, it was Wednesday, it could have been Thursday. Was there a new one in your package?
We actually don't have a package for the council meeting.
So did you see what I sent down?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Chuck will be right in for some new wording. I apologize, but, um, it was, as I said, sent down. So those are the four things for the council meeting. Okay, three for the transfer of property, one consolidated plan. And essentially what I did is I reworded the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary as between the city and HUD so that the plan application or the loan application could be moved forward. And the wording, I don't remember exactly how I worded it, but it should be, I wonder if we're getting it right now.
One package. What's that? They're all stapled together, one package, one entry.
It should be the last paragraph. I believe it was just the last, uh, the next part. It's the last resolution in your package. And it's the last page of the package. Same paragraph on that page.
Because I think as was explained to me, the reality is that neither the mayor nor the council would have final approval of the Gillesse group's project because they already own the property, is that?
I'm not sure I understand exactly what you're saying. Yes, please, because I understand it does own the property. And ultimately, I think we'll go through whatever is on the plan.
Right. But it's, so the mayor nor the council would have final approval of it or?
Well, in terms of agree on the half a million dollars closed demolition would be advance 50% on the completion demolition. And then 50% on the completion of construction of the building.
So anyway, questions? I know I'm talking with most of you, there's still some issues out there, so Ms. Porterfield?
I have a question regarding the, um, the fact that we are, we are gonna push it $500,000 for demolition. And so what would the cities return on investment be in terms of that? And that, yeah, I was told that once we tear it down, then, you know, that's done and we have no longer any interest in it. But to me, spending $500,000 in public dollars, that there needs to be some kind of return on that. I understand there's a building going on, but we have no interest in that building.
Anybody want to respond?
Well, just, as I understand what has been agreed to at this point, and there was a letter which I'm not sure where it's at right now, but what they're agreeing upon is reimbursement of half, 250,000 upon completion of the demolition. And then, so you're not paying for full demolition. They've gotta start the building and get, okay, we just began. You can get halfway through it and then the second 250 would be paid. And in terms of the city's return on investment, you're going to get ultimately a new piece of property beyond the tax rolls, a brand new piece of property, a little beyond the tax rolls. Whether it's going to be a $500,000 building or a $50 million building, at the moment, I have no idea. But, you know, the reputation of the earlier.
Right now, we're not getting any, uh, moving in. Proposal, looking at a 14 unit apartment building that, if you go through the designs and see what that might shift a unit or two, but you're gonna get a brand new building there, but more on the taxes.
So that means there won't be a pilot attached to it once it's built?
Don't know what the discussion has been in terms of pilot or the subsidized money. Some of that revenues diverted in different hands, a formula, than those apartments that would, certain portion of revenue generated from rent would go to the city. And those that are fair market would be treated fair market.
That's starting, I'm not sure if I understand. That's a, that's a new thing for me. There's a, how, so some of the revenue from the apartment rental could divert in the same.
There's a formula, my understanding that, again, a lot of this still has to be structured, the deal of the apartments, it's gonna be, the rate is, I don't know. You've had more recent discussions than I've had.
I just, I just in terms of the revenue coming back, I mean, I know that we would get tax, property tax revenue, but I didn't know if we'd get rental revenue. That was.
Rental revenue would be the incorrect term. It might come back.
Do you want me to respond?
51% of those units, because we're using block grant money through the section 108 program, has to be reserved for affordable housing. So 51%, if they build 30 units, 16 of those units will have to be reserved for low and moderate income people. That's a condition of that half million dollars being used for demolition.
All right, Ms. Brucker, did one of you have?
Sure. Can you give us the, um, the current criteria for low to moderate? Is it 200% over poverty? What's, what's the formula?
It's 80% of median income is considered low and moderate income. For one, this, if they have one family units, one person units, right?
Yes, a single person.
A single person.
Right.
Can't go over 43,550.
Their income.
For their income, for that household income per unit. So that's really, it's really a moderate person. You know, and there are a lot of people who qualify at Ellis and Union and Golem. You know, that's, that's, I think that's a very good, good figure for a single unit. Now, if there's a two, two-person unit, it'd be 49,750. And then for four people in one unit, it would be 60,150. So that would be the household, um, cap.
That would be the max.
Maybe this, they'll make less than that.
And again, 51% of those units, this would apply to.
Then the 49 million.
Would be, hopefully, but it would, they would be market rate.
Does that, does that change at all if, I'm, it's just a question in my mind, does that change at all if the designation were to be strictly for seniors, low to moderate income seniors?
No, it'd be the same, yeah.
Okay.
Other questions?
I still don't quite understand how the return is to the city. I understand that 51% would be low to moderate income.
Basically.
But what is the return?
The return would be, like the mayor said, basically the taxes and John, and Mr. Pulster said, basically through the taxes. It's because, keep in mind, this is a grant. It's not, you know, it's not a loan that we're gonna get repayments on. It's a one-shot deal.
So would the whole building be taxable and just like everybody's house is taxed?
As far as I know.
So there's not a return, I mean, the mayor, I've alluded to a formula, and I'm not, it's new to me, I've never heard of that, so.
I mean, it's not.
Is there a tax revenue formula based on the amount of rent or?
I'm, I'm not aware of it.
So it's fully taxable building, based on it's a such.
There have been no discussions about that, that I'm aware of.
Could you assume that it would be the 49% though?
Well, everybody would be.
So if 51% were low to moderate, that the other percentage is 49%.
I'm assuming whatever that buildings were, it'll be taxed that that.
All of it will be taxed.
I'm assuming, you know.
That happens.
I'm not a tax expert, but, you know.
There's no, no limitations in your book of rules that?
No, the, the only limitation is if you give that block grant money out, 51% of the units have to be affordable. And, and the developers agreed to that via that letter that has been passed out.
And just, just one more question. Mayor, did you say that the building is not on the tax rolls right now?
Correct.
How, how is that? It was owned for two years by, bought from the county, correct?
I believe the title's been transferred to the IDA or is a holding entity while these development plans are put in place. Gillesse has the right to request it at any time, and it's the same way that we structured the Luigi site that we're holding it. I think that site is held in Surra. So we're not generating any tax revenue while trying to put together the project.
Any other questions? Ms. Porterfield?
When we initially talked about this, and I don't know if, because in terms of changes, it's changed. One of the questions I asked was, would we, there be a community benefit agreement? So to see, we're using community block grant dollars. So, um, a lot of times those counties are used to, so the people get employed, so they can work on the project, et cetera. And, um, so I'm, my question is, is that, is something that will happen now that this has changed? Or is that because, you know, now it's the private developer and we're only going to be talking about demolition, is that not coming to play in the law there?
We've not talked about that specifically on this project, but this is one component of many things that we're trying to have happen in that area. We're working with Golem, Union, Ellis, and Sunnyview doing housing there. One's been getting the most recent press is Habitat. And would like to do that where we're focusing in the north end. And again, job creation becomes a component of that, walk to work, destroying some of the housing stock that's more challenged. And wanna do that in the north end where we're doing a focus where we've got what are more easily defined partners on the perimeter that happen to be major employers. But we can then take that and model that through other neighborhoods in the city. You can make that argument, you go out developing, that is easy to define it, but you've got GE on one side, you happen to have Gillesse in the Rotterdam industrial park just across the line in Rotterdam where you've got, again, a number of employers that are there. And so how do you develop these neighborhoods? Look at Stockade, look at Hamiltonville, Central State Street. We have to be able to take each one of the neighborhoods, kind of build off the strengths and work through it. It's not going to happen based on any one building, but it's a network of community groups of players that are trying to fix these up. And we want to have broad-based results from that, so it includes jobs, expanding the tax base, reducing crime, incorporating some of those elements of environmental design so that position you can do for long-term growth and sustainability.
Do you want?
Well, yeah, 'cause I guess, really, and maybe I wasn't specific enough. I guess what I really specifically wanna know, would we, would we be able to guarantee any jobs on this particular project because of our investment? That's my specific question.
And demolition?
Is that being asked? Whatever we're investing, absolutely, that's how we're investing the money.
And is that then, there will be jobs created until demolition?
Mr. Erickson?
So in terms of just funding and, I mean, we're talking here about a loan application and, you know, we've gone through the last several weeks in terms of where the money's gonna come from. Uh, one of the things that's on our committee agenda is additional funds for $630,000 additional home program income that we now have that we can reallocate to other things. Technically, can that money be used for this project or some of that money be used for this project? Is it the same dollars?
It's different. It's home money, different requirements. With the home money, it's not 51%. It's the 221, three limits per unit. It's how much you can put into a unit.
Okay.
And for this area, it's a little over 220,000 a unit. That would be the cap. It's not based on house, household income. It's more like what you're putting into the unit.
Okay.
Along with, I should say, along with household income, because you still have that 80%. They're both for affordable housing.
So the number that we wrote down before, the 49,000?
Would still apply.
That would still apply to?
Still apply to 40 or 51%? Yes, but there's still, there's a unit cap of how much you can put into a unit.
Okay.
For affordability.
And that number is?
Basically, for this area, it's 220, sort of 20,000.
Are we spending 220?
It's a little over.
A unit?
Uh, okay.
So, so then theoretically, we could use this, this year's additional funds to fund them.
There's, the only problem with this, the home money, we have to have this committed by July 31st. So there's like a time element to do this.
We got time. We got it done by, what's that?
15th.
We got it done by the 15th, probably, right? I mean, is there, I mean, is there, is it any cons? I'm looking, just throwing it out there as pros and cons, we've got the money this year, so instead of mortgaging it for 20 years, let's just make the investment in one shot. Again, it's just, just an idea to throw out, I'm not saying it's the best one, I'm just something I thought of.
I mean, the other thing, if I could just, if I could just make one point. I mean, you have, you have housing provider, our three housing providers are here with their representatives. And, I mean, I think it's important that we continue building more units in other areas, including the north side. I think it's important that we continue to fund our current housing providers. And that's why, you know, we presented this, this legislation to use that home money for that purpose.
This is to say that we're creating more housing?
But we would be, we would be helping our housing providers, is what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, I looked at the same as two houses.
Versus one developer.
Well, that's 230,000, two properties, 100,000 on one, I'm not, this sounds like a better deal for creating housing. You know, however many they're gonna put for a half a million, to me, you know, dollar for dollar, it seems like a better investment than the ones that are proposed here.
Except, those will be apartments that people live in and our health and devices build homes that people can buy.
That's true. The owner owns it.
Which we're already funding, it's just a matter of do you increase that?
Exactly.
You know, and, I mean, when we get to this topic, we'll have some more discussion because I just think the numbers seem way off on us, but.
Yeah, just, Mr. Brucker is correct that this fund hasn't been committed by July 31st, but one of the other things is, as Ms. Porterfield said, it's also used for the homeownership and rehabs in other areas. It's not for rental units, the funds that were requested to use, the 630,000 is going to be, we have in some of the buildings, in some of the units that are, for our need of rehab, so we need to broaden our focus on various objectives, homeownerships, rehab and the units. And this one is for rental units. So we can try to divide the money among various.
This is money we didn't know we had a month ago.
This is a program income. No, we did, we were expecting it. We do expect every year, kind of home funds, that by July 31st, we have to commit. This one, funds, we were expecting it, but not the exact amount, we don't know until almost close to, like, the first date that we know how much.
We have to correct the amount that you committed. Hopefully, I hope next year we have, we're in the same position. But I fear that some of our program income projects are being completed, like we get reimbursed from the state on some of the new green homes that BNI has built. That's ended, so. That's ended, so therefore, we won't get all that program income that we're getting now, unfortunately.
Anything else? Mr. Henigan, did you want to comment at all?
Just as far as the question on taxes. Whatever program is available in the city, whether it's a pilot, or some approved by, if other competitors are using, we would look at it. But we would ask for no special consideration, in pay where the taxes are for the area, and that, as we all know, for other companies. So that's the best, and who knows what proposals will be in 18 months, or, you know, any of the things. But no special considerations. Just, I'll try to keep it brief. When we've got this building, it's part of the larger plan. We want to get all the social services that the county provides in one campus area. That's better than those people who get the services. People see multiple services, they have to track around, it's more of an harder for those people. It's also part of the plan, the Y, the YSCA meant to add social service in campus. So I've been outbuilding, that needs a lot of help. As part of that whole process, we got this building as a pipeline. So we tried to figure out, did we add it, built it like a fortress? It's got lead paint, it's plastic, everything there. So we ran a number of scenarios over the last few years, and there's nothing we can do with it that was automatically combined. So that's when we had discussions with the mayor's office and the council members. A couple ideas came up, to see what the best idea. If we have assistance in the demolition, we will, let's say, we only have it 18 months. And these 14 units, maybe more, to the market dictates. Or we mix up one or two better units, we'll get a tax hold. And it will be there hopefully for the long term. We've been wrapped this back since 2009, we don't want to wait for budgets. So hopefully the benefits long term, how to quantify it, you know, I can look at it in our mind. We'll get a tax hold. So again, it's part of this bigger plan, we got to build from the county, now we have to figure out what to do with it. Because of the environmental problems, we're in this situation. There's asbestos, the root, it's got a title, it's passed it, it's been insulated. So we're trying to cope with the environmental issues. And hopefully, when I look at that area, a lot of good is happening in the area. The unit in our square place, and the one in, the one we've done next door. And at least our goal is to get that revitalization to migrate into the neighborhood. No one's going to build private line, we'll go into the middle of the neighborhood and do a big project, because some quarter, no paid worker that there, in the middle of the challenge neighborhood. So now, we're at the entranceway to the north side neighborhood. The first entranceway off the taxi, very busy road, is, out in areas of the taxi road. That's primarily used by the local corporations. So this is the first main entrance. And it's a nice corridor right now on the opposite side of the street, say they have a major... So our idea anyways, we can get this quarter fixed up. Hopefully the migration will go inwards from, from the perimeter of the neighborhood. Again, that's nothing you quantify, it's just a number. We've got a plan, so that's part of the plan. We'll have it building up in 18 months. Again, these 14 units, et cetera, we've been talking about for a while with the city. And a little bit, it's, you know, again, the assessment is based upon current market level. Particularly for commercial buildings, it's a portion of operating income. We have requests for the assessment, so we're gonna, we're gonna have an assessment, we're gonna pay a tax rate, for utilities, whatever's available or not available. No special requests to be paid. And hopefully have a functional building on that corner.
Thank you. And I, one other thing I know that's come up in some discussion too, is once you start planning what the new building is going to look like, would you be willing to share those plans with the council?
Well, absolutely. I mean, yeah, not at all, we're gonna be, all of that regulations exist in the city. And share with the council, not at all.
Any other questions? Can I do a straw poll before we actually vote? Because I would, if we defeat this, we've got to go through the whole public hearing process and everything, and it just is gonna take, stretch it out. So, who's, who's gonna, in support of this, this one, support it? Yes, okay. All right, then I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Somebody's gonna need some board.
Oh, okay, someone should move approval of the project.
I moved approval, I just want to make some comments. I know this is concerned some of our public and some of our constituents, and I understand that, I do. You look at it and you go, Gillesse Group owns this building, Washington City paid it, knocked it down. That doesn't make any sense. But, as Mr. Henigan stated, they've owned the building for two years. It's been in the IDA, we're not collecting taxes on it. It is simply not a viable project financially for Gillesse to go forward with. So now we have an antiquated, blighted building, that no one's going to do anything with it. So I respect this plan, because it's a way of moving forward. It's also uncomfortable, it's, you know, the city putting up $500,000. But I think it's a viable solution for us to get good, positive development on that quarter, and moving down that quarter of the city, which is a very important, they're all, all of our neighborhoods are important parts of the city. So, in an effort to get this building raised, rebuilt, and on the tax rolls, I think the city needs to take responsibility for the building, and it sits in the city. So I'm absolutely 100% in support of this. And in addition to that, you know, Gillesse has, you know, put an amazing amount of investment into the city, very, very key places in the city. And I feel just as confident that they will do their very, very best, and do something that's going to better the city, like Center City, like the DSS building, like the pending Alco project. So I'm in absolute full support of it, while recognizing that it's a difficult decision for us to make.
Right, so it's been moved, is there a second? Yes, okay, Ms. Brucker. All right, clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Brucker?
Yes.
Ms. Parazzo?
Aye.
Ms. Porterfield?
I have some comments I'd like to make before we pass my vote. You know, it sounds like a reasonable project, but I have to say that I do have some concerns in terms of, you know, spending $500,000 of public dollars, public money. And, you know, I specifically ask if we have the jobs come out of this. Because, you know, we have a lot of projects all over the city, and based on what we've seen so far, there's really not been enough employment of people in the city on these projects. Not to pick on this particular one, but it's the one that we're talking about right now. And I think that's extremely important. And so we're investing, if we invested, if we spent 500, if we spent CDBG dollars, any other time we spend CDBG dollars, Mr. Perk could tell you that for every dollar we spend, we're supposed to get this kind of job. And it seems to me that we can apply that same formula to this, so that people can be employed. And not only will we have a new quarter coming into the city, and all the other aesthetics that go along with this, but that people can make, people that live in the city can also benefit in terms of employment, and even if it's short-term on a project. 18 months is not that short for some people, they've been out of work for a long time. So I think that that's something that really should, you know, we haven't been able to say that that would definitely happen. So I really have concerns that that part is not taken into consideration. It's not happening, that we're spending those dollars without that particular return on investment. And in terms of the other projects that have been done all over the city, yes, they're wonderful projects, but it's, the Gillesse group still owns them, and still collecting rent from them, and the revenue that goes along with it, which would happen here as well. So it's not, it's not a total giveaway that, that, you know, that we've done on those other projects. So I'm not comfortable with all that, and I vote no.
Mr. Regge?
Yes, I'll make a few comments too, maybe Monday when you come. I didn't really hear any of your questions, really answer them tonight, in my opinion, anyhow, you asked some questions. There seems to be a lot of maybes and wells. We're talking about $500,000, a half a million dollars is what we're talking about. And as Ms. Porterfield brought out, in all due respect to Gillesse Corporation, they're not, you know, robbing, but they're making, they're in it to make money. I understand that, I can understand, that's what it is. That's a byproduct of the campus on Broadway. Well, the campus on Broadway, I'm sure was full of lead and asbestos also. I have a lot of concerns about that project also, which I brought up last Monday night. That building does not look well. So is that what we can expect with this new building also? It's just, this is, there's a lot of, there's a lot of trust put in us as elected officials. And we really have to look very carefully how we spend money. That's what we hear most of. We had a lot of people that didn't get CDBG money this year, a lot of not-for-profit's didn't get money. And they're doing a lot of public good to the city of Schenectady. So we have to be careful with this, very careful with this. My mind was made up from the get-go when I heard this, I listened to everything, and I have an open mind to a lot of things. But something like this is so glaring, that it's not the thing for us to do, to be spending taxpayer money on. It's very easy for me to vote no on this, and that's what I'm doing.
Mr. Erickson?
I think when it comes to economic development and development of housing in the city, you know, it's very important we look at return on investment, ROI. And a project like this, I was very skeptical. And uneasy with the amount of money that was discussed initially, and then this revised plan where it's, you know, $500,000. You know, when we look at other areas, CDBG money that we're spending, 2Pain is down on our agenda tonight when we get to the committee meeting, is we've got another $630,000 to spend on providing housing. And if you look, those houses, we're spending $100,000 for one property, $230,000 for two properties. I mean, we have a history of spending large amounts. This new process here that we're looking at tonight, when it's a half a million dollars, and at minimum to create 14 properties, is $35,000 per property. Now, I'd like to spend zero. I'd really like to have a situation where people are clamoring to buy properties and buy land and build lots of buildings, but we're not in that situation right now. So in terms of economic development, where we are bridging the gap between a feasible project and an infeasible project, spending $35,000, unfortunately, sounds like a better deal than some of the other things we consider. So I feel confident that, you know, Gillesse Group is going to put a nice building there. If you look at the new construction buildings they've had, I understand your concerns with building on Broadway. That was a renovation project, and the facade's fallen off, and I agree, I don't like the way it looks. But their new structures appear to be very good quality, they're nice designs, they're nice layout, and they're conducive to, you know, modern living. So I think that it's a reasonably good project. Again, not happy having to invest, having to spend any taxpayer dollars in this, but for $35, or $35,000 per housing unit, it falls within the realm of reasonability. So I will vote yes.
Ms. King?
For all the reasons Ms. Parazzo gave before, I will vote aye.
Motion carries.
Four to.
Four to two, okay. Thank you all, thank you. All right, the second piece of this then, are the transfer of the three properties that we...
Yes, the motion being a city, oh, this is, the vote is a city council meeting.
Right.
Eight, nine, and 10 that are listed in the planes, you considered last Monday night at the 6:30 committee meeting. And you approve that, and the resolutions are in the magazine that was just passed out.
Can we have to move this? All right, can we move all three at the same time?
You can if you wish, yes.
Okay, okay, so it's been moved, Ms. Parazzo, second.
A second.
Okay, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Carey. I'll entertain a motion then to adjourn the city council, the recessed city council meeting.
I'll move.
Okay, second?
Second.
Ms. Parazzo, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then, I will now convene city development and planning. First item on the agenda is zoning district change at 487 Knott Street. Mr. Strickland?
Thank you, hopefully this is the easy part of 487 Knott Street. This has been zoned, light manufacturing, more industrial dating back to the Alco plant. When we did the comprehensive plan rezone, we did not rezone this piece. As I always say, when you look at 20,000 properties, you miss a few. And Gillesse came to the planning commission to request that the zone change be changed to C4, which is downtown. Planning commission made the recommendation to the city council to move that forward. Again, it's not an industrial or a manufacturing use or site. And that is, this requests us for a call for a public hearing in two weeks to change the zoning to downtown mixed use.
All right, questions? Okay, move by Ms. Parazzo, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, it was easy? All right, allocation of the home program income fund, so specific.
Well, first I want to thank the executive director of Better Neighborhoods in the community of August, and also the executive director of Community Interest at Schenectady, the chairman. And the executive director of Habitat for Humanity, Mr. Jeff Clark. For taking their time to be here, to answer the questions later on, if you have any. We have $630,000, which was mentioned two seconds ago, minutes ago. And we do have, in the city of Schenectady, we do have various needs, various housing needs. Whether it's in the rental arena, whether it's in the homeownership, and also we have bricks and homes for some of our, our leading people that are in need of repairs to their homes. We do have a property, $630,000, and we would like to ask the city council to commit those funds to the community interest. They have eight applications currently, and they are expecting four more applications to do a $25,000 rehab on some of the homes, which may be more exciting than giving preference. Also, Better Neighborhoods, they have two homes, one 17 Chestnut, and another one in 25 Grant Avenue, and they want to try to rehab that and provide affordable housing in Schenectady.
Eight thirty-two.
Yeah, for the record, eight thirty-two. And also, the other one is Habitat for Humanity, that they want to spend $100,000 on 24 parkways. So we'd like to ask the city council.
Questions? Mr. Erickson?
So, is there more information on these investments based on just a sentence I needed?
Yes, there are letters of requests, and Community Interest at Schenectady has more information identifying each home that request that the, it's in this packet for the community interest. And also, there's the letter of interest for BNI, we can make copies and provide you with that, and also for Habitat for Humanity.
What I'm saying, I mean, all right, so this is Habitat? This is Better Neighborhoods? Okay. So Better Neighborhoods had $230,000 for two properties? That's what we got?
Let's break down, yeah. The letter should explain it more. There are some extra numbers there, because they have been previously provided funds, home funds, and part of that fund will be mixed with the current funds that are being... Am I correct? Do you want to say something more?
What was your question first?
I'm just, I, I've never given somebody $230,000 with just one sentence of description of what it's for. I probably wouldn't give somebody $10 without a, a little more description of what we're buying.
We have a project called Hush and Greet, where we're building four new houses. We're rehating seven, four of which will be done on hand. Four houses that were being moved, one on 17 Chestnut, one on the, for active, two on, one on 307. But we do have a line of credit, you know, $100,000. I think in my letter, I allocated, or I moved to the fact that we've only got $136,000. There's a request about a permanent building, we're moving these four houses. So I asked for, for an advance, an additional home loan, on accommodation, for the buildings.
So when the properties are done, you sell?
We sell.
And then, does the money come back to the city?
Whatever money's come back, yes. We have $60,000 from the state, from the houses. We have money from the sale of the houses. The houses we sold, we paid...
We have money from the sale of the house. The house was sold for $8,000 privately. And that money, whatever excess revenue we have, comes back to the city.
Yeah. Proceeding, the sales will come back.
So, it's cost 115 minus 80, and that's, that's the cost of development, so.
It was.
Well, for the two, $230, so it's 115 per house that we're putting in, right?
The purpose of the home funds are to provide affordable housing. And affordable housing, especially whatever money, construction costs or higher than what you can sell a property in the City of Schenectady.
Understand, yeah.
So, now, we are spending, it does seem like we're spending more money than what we can get at the closing, but whatever we give at the closing, that question comes back and considers the program income and homes.
Right. So, so as I'm trying to understand is, there's money here, there's money coming in from other areas. How much money's going into the house? How much are we selling the house for, so that we know the difference, which is a loss, right? We understand that.
We sell.
But how much, you know, so we understand those three components?
The house was sold for $8,500. And we're selling to people below 80% of the property.
And so, and what's the total investment per house? Not just our funding, but all the funding combined, what's the total?
Total investment in that project is about $260,000.
$260,000, and we turn around and sell for eight?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's frivolous. The state money is-- That's money, though.
Yeah.
We didn't grow it up a ton.
But that's how the federal government looks at it, too, and they see it in the distressed communities. That's why they allowed it. And as Mr. Perkins said earlier, the 221, 223K, yeah. So, they gave us a limit that we cannot spend more than that certain amount on a property to build.
Right. That seems like a lot of money to spend on a house, though. I mean, I'm thinking you can get a house less than that. Seems like a lot of money--
It's not, but--
Well, the house, the house, regardless of where the land is, if we were to build a house in Malibu or Schenectady, the structure, the lumber, I mean, you're not putting--
We spent, we spent like $10,000.
That's a lot.
All right. Let me, let me get a couple questions in. Ms. Perazzo?
You mentioned green. You mentioned green, that you were building green houses.
Yes.
Right. So, I assume there's additional cost there in producing an energy-efficient home with green technology?
Yes, I mean, we built a tiny, one tiny house.
Right.
It's a prime, you know, a--
And I also assume that due to that construction being green and costing more, ultimately it costs the homeowner less to keep their house cool and--
No, we did studies. They're running on the heat, they're running slightly, 100% of the power.
Right. So, I mean, that, that explains some of the cost, cost difference.
The interviews they designed, and I'm sure you've read this paper--
Yeah.
Where there's a lot of articles on the elders who need our company to design, so that you can age in place, you don't have to--
Okay. Ms. Porterfield?
Well, actually, similar stating about the green houses, it costs a bit more to build it. And secondly, the, the way we get the CDBG funds here is because of the areas that the houses are going, the houses are going up in. So, it's not like we have an option that we, you know, build someplace else or, or in another community. So, you know, that's, maybe it seems like more than we really should invest, and I understand. But in terms of green homes, and the fact that we get the CDBG home money specifically for that purpose, it's not like we have an option to do something different with it.
The developer that did this for us said that his house is affordable, they go up for--
The land would be the difference, not the actual construction cost. I mean, you could put it in, in Malibu, it'd be worth 3 million.
Did you want to comment?
Yeah. Most of the things that push the costs of things are things that are imposed upon us by HUD.
Like what?
The Energy Star regulations, Energy Smart. Dan and I are having a conversation now Friday about the fact that there's a piece of equipment that we could install from the House Board, and now right now, at 1060 Flotter Avenue. It's a $2,400 piece of equipment that helps circulate the air better. We're trying to determine whether we're going to be forced to do that, or whether we have a choice not, because it's just a nice thing to do. But the federal regulations make it, which is a mandatory, whether we want to or not. Remediation, it would be a lot easier if we could tear the houses down and start rebuilding. Building new houses is a lot easier and friendlier than rebuilding. But we can't do it. It's a costly process. It costs $25,000, $30,000 to get rid of the land and the messes, and right out of the box. So, there are costs that are pushed on us by HUD that none of us can avoid. And I don't like, yeah, finance, but essentially what it is, is the cost of the federal government getting rid of that history of the messes. And that's the stir of the whole thing. So, it's a cost that we cannot avoid.
All right. Any other questions? Yep. Mr. Drige?
When these houses are finished, what is the general assessment of a house that sells for $80,000?
Eighty K.
There's, there's, there's assessment $80,000?
And we, we had to, I don't know, surprise, we had to go to, because you know, they were assessing the buildings around 3105. We thought about, out of the ground, get more buildings, but people that would be able to do--
Yeah, because that's my concern. If the, the house gets assessed for more than that, we got 230 in it, assessed at 80. If it's assessed for more, the people that are buying it may not be able to afford to stay there.
Right. We have houses that we were selling for $75,000, $80,000 three years ago, four years ago, when they were assessed at at least $100,000, that are now being assessed maybe at 80, and it's market.
And as I also have said, the utility costs are almost half the percent lower, so it makes it more affordable for someone who fix it, help more evolve.
Is, is the green housing a requirement or a preference? The fact that it's green? I mean, if I was to build a house, I'm not springing the extra money to make it green, so I might go with--
We, we--
For this project?
When we acquired the state's money, what we did in Schenectady, City of Schenectady, we asked, we told them that we need energy, and it was part of the cost, and it would be a great application for sure. State likes it.
It's the overall agenda promoting the energy efficient. Proud of it.
All right. Any other questions? If not, I'll--
Happy to move in.
Okay. Second? All in favor? Aye. Okay.
Thank you for all the work you do also.
Yes. Okay. The boring project reunion call.
I might pull back because it's still in contract negotiations. Hold after he's going to make a second of his session.
Okay.
And press committed.
Okay, good. And then, the final 2013 consolidated plan allocation. Mr. Parag?
Thank you. Okay. This should read the final, final 2013 consolidated plan. But I have good news and bad news, and you should have a copy of the summary. Put it on the table. If you turn to page two of the summary, I have good news and bad news, and I'll present the bad news. The new 2013 amount per the Emergency Solutions Grant is $140,638. This is a reduction of $49,957 over what was passed in May, at the end of May. Based on the information that we had that time, we were told to reduce the Emergency Solutions Grant by HUD by 5%, and we did that. But it looks like, you know, they're cutting it even beyond that. So, again, there's, it's a, we had to take $49,957 out of this Emergency Solutions Grant money. And what we're proposing to do, for your consideration, we're taking money from the two highest amounts that were awarded using this Emergency Solutions Grant money. The first one is Bethesda House, their homeless housing and eviction prevention program. We're reducing that by $23,105 to $28,145. And then, three projects below that, SCAP's Homeless Prevention and Court Advocacy Program, we're reducing it by the same amount, $23,105 to $44,445. And if you turn to page three, because our grant amount has been reduced, we get 7.5% of that Emergency Solutions Grant money for administrative purposes. We had to cut that amount by $3,747 to $10,548. So, if you add all those reductions up, it totals The good news is, however, the block grant increased by $277,713. And there's one change on page four regarding the neighborhood revitalization strategy activities, and it's the first one. It's Better Neighborhoods Incorporated Home Buyer Education and foreclosure prevention program. Originally, they were awarded $40,000 in May. What we did, that was a combination of home money, $10,000, and the balance was block grant money. Now, if you use home money for counseling purposes, you can only count it once. If you sell a house, you have one person you counsel. The beauty of using block grant money here is, you don't have to sell a house. If I want housing counseling, and it doesn't result in a sale, you can still count it towards the low mod benefit. So, what we did here is, we took the $10,000 home money that was originally part of this, replaced it with $10,000 block grant money, and gave them, Better Neighborhoods, $14,000 more. So, $24,000 more CD money, which equals $54,000 is what we're doing. If you turn, public service activities were not touched, the same amounts on page five and six. If you turn to page seven, the bulk of this block grant money, $253,713, was placed in street, the street rehab program. And Carl, I know you would, you would like this. So, we're increasing this by $253,713 to $562, $202. It's the bulk of the block grant money we're proposing. If you turn to page eight, the home money for affordable housing increased by $33,706. And we have two changes that we're proposing. The Community Land Trust of Schenectady, it's the one, it's the fourth project down on page eight. The Homeowner Occupied Rehab Program, we're increasing that by $10,000. And that $10,000 is coming from the Better Neighborhoods Counseling project that I mentioned previously. And then, if you turn to page nine, we're proposing to increase Habitat for Humanities Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative by the full $33,706. Page 10, there's administrative activities, we're keeping them at the same amount. So, that's, that's our proposal.
Questions? Ms. Porterfield?
Regarding the paving, how much more, how many more streets or miles will we get for that?
We got, it's a good question. With the original amount of 380,000, we predicted, we projected approximately two miles. So, if that increases the 562, maybe a mile and a half more, something like that.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the changes. Okay, Ms. Porterfield?
Second.
Second by Ms. Perazzo. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. If there's nothing else to come before city development and planning, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Resess.
Are we to recess? I'm sorry. Okay. Second? All in favor? Aye.
And I will call to order government operations, then benefits.
This is a change in code, we separate management employees with specific references to CSEA. The council discussed the committee, you call the Gary, it must go back to the final adoption of legislation. This will allow the council to consider hopefully act affirmatively in putting in place the pattern agreement that we set with September 7. We're looking to do it, the other business, we have to put in place for the management employees. The way the code was written, we're not able to do that because it specifically referenced CSEA. So, this again separates management here, there, treated as separate class, the terms and conditions benefits, totally determined by the city council. I ask that you move ahead with this change, that we can, you can put that pattern agreement in place for the management employees, hopefully as you work down through our other collective bargaining and it's pretty close, you got it also.
Question?
I'd more of a comment, you know, I think it's, overall, it's, it's a good direction, it's the right thing to do, but I'm still uncomfortable with the fact that it doesn't include all management employees. So, there are some management employees who are tied to this, and some who don't. So, like, fire police chief, fire chief, the public service, public safety management does not apply.
Totally different contracts.
But they're not under contract. We passed the legislation a couple of years ago saying that we would treat them just like the guys that protect us. We gave them protection without actually having to be in the use, right? So, it's something we did, right? And now we're saying, well, now we're going to create these two tiers, and we can, we can do whatever we want for those guys, just, just like we did before. So, I'm not comfortable with two tiers of management, that there's the haves and the have lesses. And I think that can create struggles down the road, but I think everyone should be included in this. Not going to win a lot of friends that way, but, you know, I think, I think there's people who are going to be upset with the haves and the have less. I'm done.
Questions, comments?
What are the significant differences in between those two?
The difference in the health plan between the public safety management and disaster management?
Yes.
It's whatever Gary's renegotiating. I couldn't quote you on what the new plan is. I don't think we've, we're not in here. But clearly, there's two levels.
Mm-hmm.
And then, so I guess two levels, one's less cost. The reason we're doing it, I think it's the one's less cost.
Yeah, totally, Gary, what you said.
The difference between what we have now and what we're going to for management is as, say, as money. Is it a money saver? Exotic savings?
Try, I don't know specifically what you're referring to, but it's components of the healthcare system, where we're trying to contain, maintain level of benefits and contain the cost. Again, the command staff of the police and fire department, those agreements are the prerogative of the council.
Yeah, it's our, we did it, you know, a couple of years ago. Gary was the only councilman.
And we'll have a copy of those changes for Monday night, or the proposed--
No. This gives the authority to the council to then put the changes in place. So, it's a two-step process. This separates it from CSEA, and then after that, you would actually put in place the terms and conditions.
So, so previous to this management, was it represented by CSEA?
No, but the benefit package referenced CSEA.
I understand.
So, this will separate that.
That will take that language out of it.
Correct.
We don't, we don't have draft language at this point. That'll be drafted up by the street.
Just believe in the second.
Well, it's, it did circulate a couple of weeks ago, which is believing the, all of the rest of the CSEA.
So, am I understanding that this is really two different pieces of legislation?
Well, this is one piece of--
Right. But the, the fact that the command staff of the police department--
How are you?
Goes along, even kind of separate piece of legislation, has nothing to do with this--
Correct.
So, we can pass this legislation, and then we can look at the other legislation if we need to.
Kim and I are going to ask you to look at granting-- Kim and I are going to ask you to look at granting management the same benefits that were given ten thirty-seven.
Right, in this one, please. The other, the police command staff is a separate.
Having a separate package.
So even if we pass this, doesn't mean we can't look at that.
Correct.
Okay.
I understand that part, yeah.
Unless there's more questions?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Residency board appointment, Ms. King?
Yes, recommending, as you may know, Chuck's daughter had been on the residency board, has now moved out of the city, so recommending the appointment of Marva Isaacs to the residency board.
Questions? I hope I don't come before the residency board. Martha's tough cookie.
She couldn't hear you.
I said, I hope I don't come before the residency board. You're a tough cookie. I'll look for motion then?
I'll move that, second.
Second, all in favor?
I'm happy to appoint the council president.
Pardon?
Let us see appointment of the council president.
No, it's appointment of the council. I think the president would go to the next page.
Okay, Mr. Polster, is there any reason we can't take kind of all these three together?
I recommend.
Okay. Mr. Salabon then?
Yeah, I'm going to handle these.
About all three.
All right, so basically, what happened was, when the foreclosure process occurred, these three properties, twenty-five, seventeen council, twelve thirty-first staff, and five thirty-six month, were taken inadvertently. The individuals had paid their taxes sometime between the twelfth and thirteenth hour, and therefore, they were still on the foreclosure list. The properties were inadvertently taken. Our records show that we own the properties. These resolutions are going to transfer the properties back to the property owners who paid their taxes at the last minute. There's basically, there's going to be three resolutions for three different deeds. There's going to also, at the next meeting, has to be a short SARA meeting, because all three properties are currently owned by SARA. So there's going to be one deed that transferring them from SARA to the city of Schenectady, and then individual resolutions transferring them from the city of Schenectady to the rightful owners.
Well, it's good to know that people who already own their homes are going to have them back. It is an excellent, excellent example of why you should pay your taxes in timely manner.
Absolutely.
Motion to move forward?
Just one question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Now, they're all paid in full, right? There's that, that they made partial payments, everyone's paid full.
These, I can't comment as to whether.
They were, they had to pay in full in order to pay.
Yeah.
They had to pay the newer taxes first, and then it goes back. So in order to have stopped.
The foreclosure.
The foreclosure, they had to pay in full.
So I mean, it's all paid off. That's it.
So now we've seen that this has happened, that somebody, we accepted their money at the eleventh hour, and then, you know, still moves forward.
Thirteen.
Oh, thirteen, okay. Thirteen hours. Is the resumption applied so that if this happens again, that we immediately make sure that they're checked, to see if they're on the foreclosure list? Have we addressed that?
I mean, we obviously do our due diligence to try to check the foreclosure list against the taxes that have been paid. You know, these three properties managed to slip through. Obviously, you know, we try as hard as we possibly can to make sure that this doesn't happen. It did happen, we're taking the steps to rectify it. You know, hopefully, it won't happen again.
I'll second it.
Excellent, all those in favor? Write down your questions. Okay, there you go.
Or no.
It is gone. All those in favor? Aye. Excellent. Any other business to come before government operations?
Now, will we adjourn?
Excellent.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, excellent.
All right, council order health and recreation, especially about the Rose Garden. You're welcome.
So I have been asked to just give you an update on the revenue for the Rose Garden in the city, the Central Park. And what is in your packet, I noticed a memo, copy of memo that I had sent to President of City Council and the city clerk in June advising that our revenue was one thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. Since then, I had given an update to the city clerk and the city council. I think it just might have missed coming in the packet, it was delayed, dated July eleventh. And our revenue now is slightly less, one thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. And yes, why is it slightly, yes, less? And that's because what the city does is, we take deposits for the anticipated use of the Rose Garden for events, and if people who have made a deposit have canceled in the appropriate amount of time, we refund their deposit. So that's why you see a little bit of a change there, based on what I'm updating you and what you have in your packet. So I think the intent of this was just to let the council know where we are from the perspective of revenues, and I think there was some plan on discussing how those revenues might be used.
We've never, Pam Pearlman is here also from the Rose Garden Committee, so.
And I'm sorry, see you over there? Okay? And our director, Larry Bisham.
Great, thank you for coming. Because one of the things we never really talked about was, how does the Rose Garden Committee request funds, you know, for some of these funds for things? And so I just thought, you know, I'd throw it open to you folks first, just to say where you are in the process, and are you at the point where you're going to be needing some of these revenues?
Can I come up front?
Yeah, come on over here.
Just talk a little bit about the history, you know, how we understand.
Just come on over here, that way you can be on camera.
Thank you, we appreciate that. First, thank you, everyone, for having us here today. Part of the history, I guess, is kind of how this all came back, it's certainly not this administration, the previous administration, that after several years of the Rose Garden Restoration Committee having taken, I'd say essentially taken over the care of the city, when we started to do the master plan, I think around two thousand and five, two thousand and six, Mayor Shran at the time had said, at some point, when you get along with the project, or along several projects under develop, you know, we should consider at some point raising the fees to the garden. At that point, he had said that, you know, if that were the case, if the garden would be approved, that then the city probably would be splitting those fees with us. We've now been in existence eighteen years, and pretty much, I think, most people feel that we successfully have kind of pretty much taken over the Rose Garden, maintained the Rose Garden to a certain level of high expectation. We've gone through several major, I'd say, construction projects over the last ten years that have substantially improved the Rose Garden. We continually, we still, let's say, the master plan is not complete, we still have several other projects down the pipe, but we approached the city last year, the last fall, I guess, brought the discussion, because it really thought that the rankle fee for the garden was way undervalued compared to other venues of the same, right? So I think that's where we are today, is that we know that the fees are raised, but I don't think we ever got beyond the point as to what happens once we leave the garden. So I guess that's why we're here today.
Yes. I don't know, anybody have questions or comments?
In terms of discussion, I guess, what did we, I know we voted on it, but I don't know the exact number. What did we raise the fees from?
I went to fifty dollars an hour for a city resident, and one hundred dollars an hour for non-city residents. It's fifty dollars an hour for city residents, and one hundred dollars for non-city residents.
To have like a wedding or something?
Right, it's for weddings, and I think.
It's almost any event, because typically, it's any event, wedding, ceremony, wedding kind, you just can't walk into the garden, it's usually without having a city resident.
Ms. Carrazo?
I think we originally discussed having it be a presentation and request by the Rose Garden Committee when they wanted to access funds. Because, and then Greg brought that up again with the dog park, it's like, you know, it would just be good to know where the money's going through, like I said, a presentation, good for the public, good for the council. I thought we had settled on that, but.
I don't think, I think it was kind of open, I think what we're trying to understand is that for years, the Rose Garden Restoration Committee has taken it upon themselves to maintain the Rose Garden at no cost to the city. And years have gone where the city has been collecting revenue, and I think we just wanted to have an open discussion. I mean, we could submit a proposal, I mean, for example, this year, we purchased four hundred new rose bushes for a cost of two thousand dollars. We pay for the costs of three to four gardeners, part-time gardeners, that's about twenty thousand. I mean, we have extensive costs, that we do our own fundraising, we write our own grants, whatever. I think the amount of money that we're requesting from the city is nominal. I'm not quite sure what the city is doing with the revenue, you know, where, what's your line item for this revenue? I mean, all we're seeing is, we get use of dumpster, and the trash is removed, you know, that's about all we're seeing in terms of the city's investment in the Rose Garden. Otherwise, the Rose Garden Restoration Committee, is undertaking all the costs, all the improvements. We have a separate budget for capital improvements, we do our own capital campaigns, we come to the city to review our plans for those major undertakings. Technically, the city owns all the structures up there, we're just maintaining the garden so that it's a benefit to the city and any other visitors that come.
I think it's, Ms. Carrazo said, it was our intent that you would submit to us bills or homes, or to say that you spent this amount of money, and we'd like to be reimbursed, and we did discuss that, but I agree, I don't think we ever finalized that.
I think it was, it was never paid to us.
I think it might have been a discussion, but I don't know, it was something that was tabled, and wait to see how the revenues, you know. So I guess it's up to you folks how you want us to present it. I mean, if you want us to present the bills for the rose bushes or something like that, you know, but then we don't have a clear understanding of the revenue that's come in either, so we want to kind of keep in and in. And I'm hoping that raising the fees hasn't been a deterrent. Was there any way to mirror the number of events from last year?
I can, I can only speak to the revenue, when you run reports from the city's accounting system, that our revenue is actually up. At the six-month point, it's actually above what we would have seen in the last three years prior to two thousand and twelve, including two thousand and twelve, eleven, and ten. It was all around a thousand dollars, and right now, we're at the level I mentioned earlier, which is around the eleven hundred.
So that's also including deposits for weddings that might take place in August as well?
It's everything as of July eleventh, so.
Okay. So, Ms. Polster, so in order for us to do that, do we need to make any second agreement? Or do they just submit their bill? Probably needs to be voted that we want to.
I think that's more of a question for finance. As it stands right now, you need to approve, and it needs to be something justified by finance, writing a check. If you're happy with the building submitted, and it comes in for you to reimburse it, that's fine.
My thought is, I mean, they're clearly investing two thousand dollars in plans, twenty thousand, and they're, this is an operation.
Yes.
Our fourteen hundred dollars, as nice as that is, is not going to make or break their day. My thought is, they clearly are spending more than that. So maybe once a year, or every six months, or once a quarter, we just say, yep, you guys have spent the money, make a transfer to help subsidize the cost of it, and go that way. I mean, again, we're talking fourteen hundred dollars, something like that, so.
I get it, and I'm not questioning the viability or the progress of the Rose Garden, but I also feel, just as though you are very transparent to your funders, you know what I mean, with what you're spending the money on, I think, even though it's a small amount, we need to be very transparent from the city's level. So I think something needs to come before the council to say, here, we spent this money, and then the council, because only in the case of having everything out in the open, because it's, you know, it's taking advantage of the city.
And I think submitting an invoice, for example, bushes, mulch, the spraying, those kind of things are very.
I mean, they're routine for us.
Routine for us, and I think the public wouldn't have a problem questioning those things, so, and those seem like very legitimate.
Would you prefer, like, maybe twice a year, or whatever, that we just submit to the same?
Well, what works best for your accounting system?
Larry?
I couldn't hear that call with the air commission.
Larry's our treasurer, so, they're just inquiring as to, if we were to submit an invoice for an expense, would it be best to do it once?
Once a year.
Once a year, or twice a year? It's up.
On the part of the city, I mean, I think, you know, material, because we don't want to go.
And it might be best after the season, if we know what amount of revenue you've taken in, someone could give us an idea, and then we could submit the.
Budget for it, if it's on here.
Yeah, yeah.
From the finance perspective, that is.
That would be fine, you just have to, the city council have to realize that the current budget we're operating on did not anticipate a return of any revenue, so if that were to be something that the city council wanted to do, we'd come before you move the budget reallocation, you recognize that expense. And as I mentioned, I think that our revenue is probably, you know, it's certainly going to probably exceed eleven hundred, I don't know that it's going to get to the levels of, I mean, there are expenses here. Well, on that question, I'm just, I'm just, all I'm saying is that it would be determination of the city council if you want to have that revenue as your cap, or if you wanted to do something other than that.
I think we would be interested, just in the revenue that comes in from the fees, if we submitted an invoice that was a bit higher than the revenue taken in, we wouldn't expect that, you know, we would just expect permit fees, debt, you know, to the speaker.
So, Ms. Genomio?
Are we, are you saying that we have to reallocate the budget, have to reallocation our budget before we can make the agreement?
Well, we didn't, the two thousand and thirteen budget did not contemplate any return of revenue from the general fund for this type of expense, so I would think we would have to do a legislation to either, to recognize the fact that the city council would now like to make that type of expense. So, you know, okay? Of the rest?
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion to that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. I will move that we modify the budget, right, to come up with the expenditure?
So, I think a lot of it is expenditure.
We have revenue, we already recognize revenue.
So you'd be taking it out, you'd be taking that revenue out of the budget?
Right.
Exactly. And I guess.
We got to figure out where technically we take it from.
Right, I would think that, well, if we were to basically reduce the revenue and then create the expenditure, we would have the same net effect. So then there's the issue, do you want to wait until such time as we're later in the year, and you actually know what your Rose Garden revenue is, because I think right now, we're going to be in flux a little bit.
Right, it certainly would, it's not going to affect us from where we put, say, the end of the season, September, October.
Would it be something that we would do in the next budget cycle?
We can do it.
I mean, if that would be cleaner, and if you're saying that it's not, you know, a huge difference to you anyway.
Sounds like what you're talking about, the housing, the two thousand and thousands, it's not going to affect us this year.
Why don't we do it?
The one thing I want to mention, though, is sort of reforming it here, so I can feel I have to say this, is this is the general fund, so two thousand and thirteen revenues and expenditures, that comes and that goes, fund balance, that door is sort of shut.
Right.
Doesn't mean that you can't do what you're talking about, but you're actually be using two thousand and fourteen cash, not two thousand and thirteen cash.
I would wait, I should wait till the next budget cycle, till the fact that you're doing it.
You're using money from two thousand, you want to use two thousand and twelve, is that what you're saying? Two thousand and thirteen?
Saying it's really the minimum amount of money, I was just pointing out that when you end the fiscal year for general fund operations, it is what it is, you close your book, you put it into fund balance.
We can make, we can make the adjustments in the budget, right, resolution, next week. It's fourteen hundred dollars, and then out, we'll, I think we can adjust, make that adjustment, right?
Later on this year, in this budget, as I presented.
In this current budget, right?
Yeah, yeah, I would just recommend.
Later on.
Yeah, we've done it.
Wait till we see.
At the end of the season, we'll make that adjustment, and we'll go.
Yes.
So. Certainly, at that point, we can come back and get a little more, if our expenses possible.
Okay, that would be good. And it should be second full blown in about a week, so if you haven't been there yet.
Thank you very much.
Good, well, thank you.
Good job.
Anything else to come before health and recreation?
So, I'm sorry, for the minutes, I understand what you're doing with the budget, but are you going to move the.
you going to move the process, the submission of an invoice to equal the amount? Do you want to move that tonight? So there's clarity later?
No, just make a resolution, that's our official policy.
That, the process that you just described, you want to have a resolution to describe that process?
Technically, we could, we could start doing that budget amendment. Well, we would have to estimate, so when it, when it comes down at the end of the season, and we know how much we have, we just need, our job is just to allocate it in the budget. You know, it's not, you know, then the mayor actually, I guess, writes and signs the checks or something, so we, we just need to allocate the funds.
But we still need to approve the process that we just discussed, that we said that when they submit a bill, when they, you know, they present a check, and then they would present that, they'd have a check, we still have to approve the process at the top of that.
Right, but I don't know if you need a resolution to...
So we need a resolution?
Yes. Wait till the end of October, November.
So, it's just a question.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure why we don't just move the resolution right now, that we have a process in place, so when it comes time, you know, we don't bring it back again.
We don't know what the number is, you know, we have it in the budget, so do the resolution say it's $1,532?
No, I'm not asking to remove the resolution for the amount, the process, that when, when, at the end of the time, whatever the timeframe is, they submit their bill, whatever that amount is, and they, the city cuts a check, just the process, not the amount in line.
I don't think we need a resolution.
Because it has not included some expenditure in this year's budget, we're going to have to do a resolution with a specific amount.
Okay.
We can do that for next year, part of the budget process, but this year, you're gonna have to take some of our action to actually detail out what amount of money you want to transfer to.
Okay, when should we bring this back?
I'd say the end of October, November, and then the season will close down, we'll know how much revenue is coming in, when it's supposed to, or you're gonna do it before that, you say, like, you give 95 cents on the dollar, just, so, I wish to point it out, if we do get some of those people who cancel and we refund that, it might be a little bit of money in play, they wouldn't get, we might have a little bit of trouble.
Okay. Anything else to come before public service?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Your turn. Call for a public service and utilities to listen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Legislation we've got to have in front of you tonight is a recommendation to award the contract for the city's centrifuge, the watering centrifuge of the wastewater treatment plant. It's just a one project with three contracts, the general contract, the electrical contract, and the mechanical contract, the lowest responsible bid. Total project is about $1.8 million. It will replace the age-old centrifuge that was put in, I believe, in 1998. It's the only centrifuge we have right now for the watering, and slightly the wastewater treatment plant. It's exceeded its useful life. Parts are no longer available for the particular unit. It's time to replace it.
Mr. Harrison?
What was the budget, we budgeted this in the capital budget?
Their, their, this year's capital budget was $1.5 million, and we have some money left over in the previous capital budgets, we covered, so all the costs are, we've covered two to three capital codes that are there.
Okay, so the prior, the money from the prior is owes for other projects that are left over, or was this project we scheduled?
Yeah, we looked at trying to do it the year before, a lot of things came up with the co-gen facility, so there's some leftover part of the most capital projects that we can put in the two centrifuges.
Any other questions?
Yeah, actually, I know we talked about a while back, correct me if I'm kind of confusing two different projects, but we were talking about taking sewage and sludge from other municipalities and...
There was some, there is some talk about a potential dryer that would come after the centrifuge, you do water your sludge, then you look at a disposal method. The disposal method would be the dryer, that is still on the intended use plan with the state, going now where we are hauling sludge with the current activities, we need, we have the landfill, it's just beneficial, you know, to continue hauling, look at other aspects of the plant that need to be upgraded, but that, that project is still viable, as I said, it's still on the intended use plan, so it's still sitting out there for potential funding, and we'll be ready for it.
Okay, but so this centrifuge would handle, would we be processing other municipalities through the centrifuge?
Well, we always process other municipalities, because we do other municipalities, we live in Scotia, parts of Miskinaw, parts of Gwannaw, parts of Glendale, even the handling of alcohol, it all comes into our collection system, and we treat all that at the wastewater treatment plant, so we are taking some outside of the system that's coming through the system now. With the proposed future dryer, we would look at bringing sludge separately, or treating that sludge through our system. You all know that the lowest bidder on electrical, they did send a letter, they withdrew a little bit, they said a substantial mathematical error, so it went to the second bid, so we didn't get a letter, and then withdrawing their...
I know you sent me the backup information, and I don't think it's attached here, about how many bidders did we get at each component?
We got two bidders for the general contract, we got three on the mechanical, and seven on the electrical, and then one with, the whole bid with three. And it was out for about four weeks this week.
Any other questions? All right, second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Anything else to come before public service and utilities? I don't understand much to attend to.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Call for order claims, on executive session. Motion in motion to executive session.
We'll be going to executive session.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Executive session.